All right now, formally call this meeting to order. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here. We have Ms. Holm here as our interpreter. Please introduce yourself for the audience.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy. Soy intérprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for citizen comments. Citizens have up to three minutes to speak for the city council on any topic that they would like. These are non-agendized items, so city council members are not able to respond in a substantive way to the issues brought up by these members, but it may be added to a future agenda. Our first speaker, up to three minutes for public comment, is Mr. John Rusnick.
I'm John Rusnick, 29:30 Eastern. I got a letter from Brad Holm on July 20th. I just want to share a few things with you. He said I turned in 13 to 14 inches against the rental property next to me. I don't think that's too bad for 11 years. I could use two a year anyhow. Then he wrote, they used half-inch gravel on the driveway. Now, he says he got word by mouth, by phone, but I've got it in writing. It's one and a half inches. It's not two inches, not three inches. It's one or one and a half, or it moves when it's driven on. Now, I got 3,000 feet. Talks about the yard in the back, 3,000 feet plus. It's really 6,177 feet. If you want to measure it, come on down to my place. I'll furnish the tape. We'll measure it. It says, "The driveway to Raps Home and primary area ingress vehicle maneuvering, parking, and driveway pave according to city code." It's not according to city code because you've got, you can go up the driveway, but then you're going into the 6,000-feet area. And the city says that all parking on non-dustproof driveways is illegal. You have to have it dustproof, and that is in writing. Statute of the 3,000 feet is 504. A-7 is state statute. So there is where we are today. I think his letter is a little misleading. I think we should be, and DeCecio told me, everybody breaks the law. Well, everybody shouldn't break the law. You guys take an oath. You guys should follow the oath and do something about this situation we got here. And all I got from Brad Holm is a bunch of gobbledegook. Here's the letter. I'll give you a copy if you want it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. Councilman DeCecio, he referenced a statement you had made. I feel it's fair to give you a chance to speak on that brief issue.
Just if I could, just a point of clarification what the case is about. It's a difference between a three-quarter stone in someone's front yard versus a half-quarter stone in someone's front yard, and that is what the issue is here. And the city just doesn't get involved in stone.
Yes, but the ordinance calls for one quarter, no less than one quarter, and no larger than three-quarter. And it comes that way so that you can put that in the driveway. I'm not saying that I can't be a little...
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. No, no, you had your time. You had referenced that Councilman DeCecio had said that everyone breaks the law. I wanted to give the councilman a chance to correct the record about whether he said that or not. He doesn't deny saying that. I'm just kidding.
What I did, Mayor, is reference to saying that people during the day will drive fast in a slow zone, and I said, and the issue here deals with a neighbor complaining because another neighbor has, instead of a three-quarter inch stone in their front yard, they had one and a half inch stone. So, a half inch, I'm sorry, it's a quarter-inch difference.
All right, Councilman.
That's it.
I was just kidding.
No, I know, Mayor. Thanks.
All right. Ms. Barker, Diane Barker is the next speaker. Mr. Rusnick, thank you very much. You had your chance. I wanted to give the councilman a chance to respond specifically to the statement you had made, reference to a quote that he had...
Okay, I'm Diane Barker, and I'm in District 7. And I'm going to hand in my resume, just so you know that, you know, I do have a little education, and I've studied Mr. Rusnick's problem. And so, let you know, you know, a little bit of my credentials. I'm a college graduate, and I've been self-supporting for most of my life in major industries. And the thing is, it's more than the size of rock. I have a memorandum that I've given to the city council on the job duties that was signed in 1992 from the various entities that are supposed to protect us from pollution, and the county has sent us to the city jurisdiction. However, I have a PAO, who is the Adjustment Board, who's admitted to Allen Stevenson in 2014 that the city has no authority to issue any dustproofing violations under our ordinance, and this has to do with the 3,000-square-feet, Councilman DeCecio. So it's more, it has state law, and it hasn't been handled. We've then talked to the county about this because they're enforcement, but the main authority in Arizona is the state. If we don't have you do your job, then we will seek that. And the EPA, after reading the judge's order on the Loop 202, I'm not so sure that the EPA is doing right by our area. And anybody that follows daily, the air pollution, we have non-attainment for particulates, this case also, and ozone. So it's a serious issue. I want to also remind you, your mission, and you're here because you're to serve the citizenry, you've taken the oath. It's to improve the quality of life in Phoenix through efficient delivery of outstanding services. You are a member of Valley Metro. Valley Metro also is kicking the can. Mr. Rusnick's problem has been kicked for 10 years. It started out with his councilman, then Greg Stanton. And I'm going to give this to you, Ed Zerker, because the people weren't able to speak on the minutes over at Valley Metro recently, and I see you're the chair of the Transit Management Committee, and that's wrong because they agendized it before the consent agenda, but then they didn't let you speak on it at the call to the audience. So, you know, if we don't watch out where we're going, we can end up there. We're citizens. Many of these people here are public taxpayers, citizens, and you work for us, and we would like to have you wear that hat. I think you're intelligent enough to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker.
Mayor and council, good afternoon, and welcome back to life from your 60-day vacation I want to speak today on two items, one from the Arizona Republic on August 28th, which is a week ago last Sunday, by a sports columnist, Dan Bickley. He was writing about Jerry Colangelo and the basketball team's success at the Olympics in Rio de Janeiro. I cite this one brief paragraph because it's applicable to our failing, flailing baseball Quote, this is a quote from Jerry in answer to a question. "I'm not going to be making excuses for anyone about our gold medal victory." Someone said to me, one of the officials said to me, "You know, next time you play, you ought to play with four men on the court." And Jerry replied, "No, maybe the other team better get their act together and compete." That, in a nutshell, is what the baseball team needs to do, beginning with the sale of the baseball team from a successful insurance broker from Cincinnati, who probably knows and loves the game as I do, but like myself, except I'm not a multimillionaire, has no more background and knowledge of owning, operating, and managing a professional baseball The team needs to be sold to somebody who has not only the ability to purchase it, but the knowledge to operate and manage it to success or close to success. No team is ever in first place, witness the Yankees all the time. But this team is failing and flailing because it has that kind of an owner and upper office management. The next is a quote from the New York Times, from a noted and longtime columnist for the Times, Timothy Egan. This is in relation to the election we have coming up in November, and I will read the paragraph that's applicable. Are you smarter than an immigrant? Can you name all three members, excuse me, all three branches of the government or a single Supreme Court justice? Most Americans, those born here who are not immigrants, cannot.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
About 90% of the people in this country can't answer those basic questions. That's one of the reasons this country is flailing.
Thank you very much.
Mindlessly.
Ms. Rogers, I appreciate it. Your three minutes is up. I appreciate it very much. Thanks for your testimony. Next is the city clerk. Please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-6199 through 6211, S-42845 through 42865, and resolutions number 21389 and 21474 through 21478.
All right, thank you very much. Next is meeting minutes from previous meetings. Councilman DeCecio, do you have a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from June 1, 2016?
I move their approval, Mayor.
With a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, formal meeting minutes, June 22, 2016.
I approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Do we have a motion on the mayor's boards and commission nominations?
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass unanimously. City council board and commission nominations?
Motion to approve city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I'll now swear in members of the public who are here to provide service to the citizens of the city of Phoenix. It'll happen on my right, your left. Afterwards, please come behind the dais so that individual council members can thank you in advance for your service to the citizens of Phoenix. Please raise your right hand. I, state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of... According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations, you're official. Thanks for your service. All right, thank you in advance for your service to the citizens of Phoenix. It is very, very much appreciated. Now we'll move on to voting items before the city council. I would request that we have a motion to take item 69 out of order. 69 is a zoning case at 14th Street and Missouri Avenue. Can I get a motion to take that item out of order?
I would like to make a motion...
First we need to take it out of order.
Or make a, take it out of order.
A motion to take item 69 out of order. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll now hand it to Councilman Pastor, who I think wanted to ask for a continuance on that item. Councilman?
So, Councilman DeCecio, I would like to request a continuance due to the fact that I had received some emails and requested for some information from the planning department, and I just received it right before I walked in and was unable to read it. So I'm asking politely if I could continue this.
Okay, and then we have a date for a proposed continuance?
When's our...
Just to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
9/21.
So it'd be till the September 21st meeting. So the motion is for a continuance on that item. Is there a second?
Out of courtesy...
I don't mind seconding it if that's the case, but I do want to make a comment if I could afterwards, Mayor.
Please, so there is a motion to continue and a second on that item for the reasons that Councilman Pastor requested, and certainly any council members want to comment on the continuance request, that's perfectly fine, and obviously I'll take any cards from the audience on the issue of a continuance, but not the substantive item. Councilman?
Just for the public to understand what's going on, Councilman Pastor came up to me earlier and asked me if there was any possible way that she had received some information on the case. I normally, I mean, when you have this many people coming down, you know, people take time off their day, but when a council member does ask for that, we generally grant a continuance, and we've done that more than once. And sometimes we've continued a case two or three times because as new information comes in, they want time to digest that. I don't have an issue with that, if that's what the councilwoman would like. My understanding is that there are others up here that would also like it as well. I'd like to hear what the public has to say to something like that, but as a general rule, we've never had an issue with a council member wanting more information on a case. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So now I'll turn to members of the public who are here. Obviously, there are a large number of people here on this item. I'll take testimony today on the issue of the continuance till the 21st, whether or not you think it should be continued or not continued, but I'll, we're not allowed to take testimony under these circumstances on the substance of the underlying item. So there are many cards here. I'll certainly ask whether or not you want to provide testimony on the request for a continuance. David Zuckerman, did you wish to provide testimony on the continuance? Raymond Garcia? Philip Feldman, I know, and I think a lot of people have maybe donated time to you. Did you wish to provide, so the request is for a continuance. We're going to hear this item and its substance in a couple weeks, but today the request is just for a continuance so that the councilwoman can review, I think, a lot of the information submitted on this item. How about Eric Baskin Thweare? I apologize. Did you want to come forward on the issue of the continuance? And then, in addition, those that have the option, Charles Shepherd? Art Hiday? Eric, please go ahead. You go first.
Sure. This is about the continuance.
Yeah, so the request, the request is only for a continuance. We're going to hear this item and substance in a couple weeks. I think the councilwoman wants additional time to read some of the information probably submitted, mostly by people wearing orange shirts.
Yeah, but we would like to be first on the agenda, if that's...
I will, I, the answer is, all benefit of the doubt will go to you. Who knows what emergency item might appear?
Sure, of course.
But yes, but assuming it's regular order of business, that's a fair request.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we feel comfortable with it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, anyone else here wishing to speak on the issue of a continuance? Art Hiday, Tom Gannon, please.
Art Hiday, I'm in agreement with Eric, but look at these people that are down here. Most of them have been attending all the hearings. People are taking time off of work. This has created an inconvenience to the disadvantage of the neighborhood. Who knows whether we can expect to have this kind of turnout the next time? Fair play? I don't think so. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that testimony. Anybody else want to testify on the issue of a continuance? Please.
Tom Gannon, the continuance is fine, but first on the agenda. Please know that the elderly have come, neighbors in vast numbers. I think we owe them a note of gratefulness and respect.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
I am asking to continue it because I got some information regarding from neighborhoods and some specific information that I asked for research. If you guys would like us to vote on it, we can vote on it. I just want to do my due diligence in being able to make a decision. It's up to you.
All right, well, the motion is to continue. That's the second. Please come forward if you want to provide any testimony on the issue of a continuance of this, of this item. Good to see you.
I, the name is Wally Graham. I don't object to the continuance, and I appreciate Councilwoman Pastor doing more due diligence. My request is that the information you have, whatever it is, should not be shared with the opposing side. And what I've seen down here is that they seem to have free access. Each time I've been down here, I've seen them. So I'm asking you not to share whatever that information is because there are some things that, quite frankly, what ends up happening is that then becomes the opposition's way of trying to neuter our case. We have a strong case, and we'd like for you to continue it, but we'd ask you to keep it in confidence, whatever it is you have. Thanks.
All right, I appreciate that sentiment in general. Information that's shared with the city council is public record, and we would have an obligation to share it with any member of the public, whether it be an applicant or not. So if you don't want information shared, don't give it to a public body because that gets us in trouble if we hide it.
He might be meaning strategy-wise, too, because there were some things that Eric had said to me that we did not share, but it was strategic more, Mayor. I think that's probably where they're coming from.
I apologize. I thought he meant some of the written information.
It sounds that way.
No, it's not written, it's not written information.
You, Mayor, may I just, the mayor was not privy to the conversations of the request that was done early on, and so the way it was presented was like public information. Well, public information is public information, and so I want to give credit to the mayor for, you know, at least bringing that up. Thanks.
So are you keeping secrets from this council?
No.
Jeez, all right. Any other comments on the issue of the continuance? Please.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Taylor Earl with Earl Curly Lagard, address 3101 North Central Avenue. I represent the property owners who are the applicants in this case, and we are willing to accept the continuance, and we have met with the neighbors, have done a lot of outreach in this case. We understand that there are certain points at which we may not have an agreement, but we've done our best to reach out and to try to offer to make changes to the plan, and we recognize that some people simply just don't want any version of R.O., regardless of what it has, but...
I got to actually keep it on the continuance issue only.
So to that point, so the continuance, we're fine moving forward with the continuance.
Thank you so very much. Any additional comments from anyone? I know people did take time out of their busy schedules to be down here, so each of the council members have that chance to fully review the information, not only Councilman Pastor, but all of us. Please come forward, if you want to testify on the issue of continuance. State your name for the record.
Hi, Neil Haddad. Mayor, could you please share how many cards you have on this case and for and against?
And so we're not only doing that and stalling for time. Anybody else want to testify on the issue of continuance while I try to give a reasonable estimate on the number of cards for and against? Any other comments by members of this council? All right. It appears that I have approximately, these are approximate numbers because this would be subject to public record, and someone could check my math on this. It appears to be about seven or eight in favor. Oh, yes, add two more to that, and then I'm guessing by a factor of four or five times more than that on the other side of it. So I'm guessing, I'm just looking at the pile, and maybe 30 to 40 opposed to it of those that have submitted cards here today. Obviously, we're getting a lot of emails and other communication for folks that want to express an opinion, who may or may not be able to attend, so, you know, the cards in a meeting doesn't necessarily reflect all of it, but we try to take all of that in consideration in advance of the decision. Okay, any other comments on the continuance? The motion is continued until 21st. There is a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We will see you, hopefully all of you, if not more, back on the 21st. Thank you for coming. All right, now we're going to move to liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Motion to approve items 1 through 24.
We have a motion and a second on the proposed liquor license applications. All of the cards on these items appear to be in favor, not wishing to speak. Any comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda are ordinances, resolutions, new business, end planning, and zoning, except for 69. Vice Mayor, are we ready with a omnibus motion on those items?
We are. Motion to approve items 25 through 68, except the following. Items 25, 28, 31, 38, 57. Item 37 is being continued to December 7, 2016. Item 68 is being continued to November 2, 2016, and excluding these items for public comment, item 29, item 64.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Tim Holton, are you, you're opposed to item 68. Are you opposed to the continuance or just to the underlying item?
Underlying.
Okay, good. So that item is proposed for continuance as per the motion. Any comments on the proposed omnibus motion? Oh, we need a second. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCecio. No acc...
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Wearing. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. So that item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 25, which is a public hearing on an item. No action will be taken on this item. Item 25 is a proposed, what's a, is it proposed annexation? What is it proposed?
Anexation.
Okay, proposed annexation of a parcel at 13th Avenue and Joe Maxx Road. I will now open the public hearing on item 25. Are there any cards on item 25? Is any member of the public here to provide testimony on item number 25, proposed annexation of a parcel at 13th Avenue and Joe Maxx Road, going once? Going, oh, there is somebody here? Did you wish to provide testimony on this item? If you want testimony now, you don't have to, but, but, but we legally have to go through this process. We legally have to hold a public hearing. You're not obligated to provide public testimony, but if you want to, the floor is yours. Okay, good. Okay, good. So is anyone else here to provide testimony on item 25? Going once, going twice. The public hearing on that proposed annexation is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item number 28. Item number 28 is a proposed extension of the federal representation contracts with firms representing the city in Washington D.C., Holland and Knight, and Murray Montgomery and O'Donnell. Do we have a motion on item 28?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on item 28? Are there any comments by members of the city council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, no.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. I vote a seven to two. That item passes. Item number 29 is next. Do we have a motion on 29?
Move approval of item 29.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on 29? We have a second on 29. Mr. Kenneth Spear, you're in favor of 29. The motion is in your favor. Do you want to provide testimony? Please. If you want to provide testimony, now is the time.
Mayor and council, yes, I'd like to voice my approval. I'm a board member with the agency. We provide rapid re-emergent housing for men, U.S. male veterans, who have had issues reemerging to the community. Those funds will be provided for housing, counseling services, and other needs while they're with us, which is a 30 to 90-day transition program for the vets. So thank you for your positive consideration.
All right. Thank you very much for that important service of the community. So we have a motion in favor of the grant from Tohoto Nation. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Next item is 31. Do we have a motion on 31?
Move approval for 31. Second.
I apologize. City clerk needs to read the title. That was my mistake. Please.
Ordinance G 6199, and ordinance amending section 9-1 of the Phoenix City Code to update the Phoenix Building Construction Code with amendments to ASME, the 2012 International Building Code, 2012 International Energy Conservation Code, 2012 International Mechanical Code, 2012 International Residential Code, and 2011 National Electrical Code.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion on 31. We have a second. Are any cards on item? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call. Oh, please.
May I just say?
Councilwoman.
Because this isn't my, this is my area. I, I really want to commend staff. They have to work with trades. They have to work with the development community to come up with these ordinances. It is for public safety. I appreciate what they do.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item 38. And why don't I have staff do a short, short presentation on what is being proposed for item 38? Chris Mackey, our economic director, is here. What is being recommended to the city council on item 38?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The item before you is a notice of intention for this council to hear a development agreement and related documents at your October 5th hearing. So the only vote taking place today would be simply to notice the public of the intention to hear those agreements on October 5th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Mackey about what's on the agenda for item 38? Do we, Councilman Noakowski?
Mayor, it's really some comments. It's just been, it's been really a Team Phoenix approach, working along with the mayor's office and, and your department to really make this happen and have a grocery store finally in downtown Phoenix is incredible. So I just really want to thank all the hard work and all the different departments and, and the councilmembers that worked on this to attract Fries Grocery Store to downtown Phoenix. I'd like to also thank the CED team for all their hard work and dedication in this. This agreement has reduced an incentive of a giplet from a third, from fifty, from 50 years to 75 years, and I believe that net cost for the city of Phoenix will be about $300,000, where it was supposed to be about $32 million, I believe, right? And this property has also been in the name of the city for, since the nineteen, in 1800s. So it hasn't been collecting any taxes. So for the first time, we'll be generating some, some new tax, some sales dollars off of this, about $76 million, and that'll go back into the general funds, which will help us with our parks, our police officer, firefighters, and all the different services that the city of Phoenix is doing. So this is really a win-win for the city of Phoenix, a win-win for all of the taxpayers of the city of Phoenix. I just really want to thank our, all of our staff and the mayor's office also, once again, for that Team Phoenix approach in making this happen, and all the, and the developers themselves for agreeing to this type of agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to make a motion on the item? So we have it on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Waring, comments or questions?
I just want to say, it, it sounds like a great project. It's great to have a grocery store down there. I, I can't vote for it because of the giplet. I think the original one was from 1991. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, so this is scaling it back, as Councilman Noakowski said, so that's a good thing, and it's a little different than voting for a new one. But, you know, the property sat empty in the 25 years, got a quarter of a century since the original giplet was put on. It hasn't helped sell it, and now it's being scaled back, which indicates the first one was, I guess, too generous, might be a way to phrase it. I, I just, I don't think we should be engaging in this kind of back and forth, but, but in any case, but the project itself has a lot of merit. You know, I, I wish it was a different circumstance, and maybe I could support it. But, but I appreciate all your efforts on this. Thank you, and the developers as well.
Thank you very much, Councilman Waring. Ms. Mackey, you, you accurately portrayed what's on the agenda today, what is and what isn't. However, it is very closely related to the, you know, proposed development agreement, which I think staff has worked on and is likely going to be recommending before the city council. Maybe you can go in a little more detail about what is the proposed development agreement and why you think it's a good, good deal for the people of Phoenix.
I'd be happy to, mayor. The agreement that we would, staff would propose to bring to your October 5th agenda would take an existing agreement and amend that agreement from 1991, and an additional agreement from 2007. So there are two agreements that are binding over the top of the property that was known as Block 23. It's bounded by Washington and Jefferson, Central, and First. Property's been in city, a city or some other type of governmental control since the beginning of statehood. So that property has, has never generated any revenue. The development agreement that staff is proposing to move forward with would take that property and actually put it into a revenue generating property. It would bring forward a Fries Grocery Store, as we're all so excited about, about 300 high-rise residential units, but 150,000 square foot, feet of creative office space, and another 15,000 square feet of retail space. What staff's proposal in our negotiations with the developer is to reduce the existing agreement from 75 years to 50 years, and then to buy back the development rights through a process of, through a revenue sharing agreement to buy the development rights back to the property. The city, if it wanted to build on the property today, if we wanted to take it out for RFP today, we could not. We do not control that property and have not since 1991. So what this agreement is doing, it's giving us a chance to go back and modify that agreement to give the city measurable goals when the property has to build, when it comes out of the ground, and gets those development rights back, where the city would buy those rights back over time. In return, the developer would buy the property from us over a term certain.
All right. Thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of this, of this council? Councilman Pastor, please.
So my understanding is that we're reducing the time from 75 years to 50 years. This is already part of the agreement, and what we would be voting on, and once we go through this process in October, possibly reducing the years of the, the agreement.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that is absolutely correct. There is already a development agreement with a giplet exists on the property today, which could be built on today.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilman?
Yep. Thank you, mayor. I, I'm excited about this project. What's not to be excited about, we, the grocery store is part of it, something that we've been needing for a very long time. We do have a food desert in, in downtown Phoenix, but let's, let's not stop there. We're also talking about residential units and, which is a big deal, and I don't, there are some really big components here. We have a grocery store, residential units, and we can't underscore the importance of the office space and the type of office space that we have. I remember Phase One, Red Development, who's done a very good job, a strong partner in this development as well, it's 600,000 square feet of office space. And, and when you think of the needs, the business needs of downtown at the time, which are still some of the, the current needs, it was perfect for bankers and accountants and attorneys. The needs of today's economy moving forward is a little bit different. It continues to evolve. We've tasked, this council has tasked our economic development team with, you know, moving us forward towards innovation, tech jobs, and, and Red Development will help us do that with this space. Red actually will have the ability to change out floor plates, for example, to, to really make it attractive for some of the needs that today's tech and innovation sector wants, the high ceilings, the open space, the, the windows, and, and we don't have enough of that space in downtown Phoenix. So we're talking about bringing more people into downtown. More people will live downtown. That's, that's a goal for, for all of us, I think. I will certainly speak for myself, and I know I'm not alone on this council. It also gives us the ability to have not just any grocery store, but a great grocery store and fries, food stores in downtown Phoenix. But again, as we continue to move our economy forward and move our downtown forward, this is exactly the type of project that's needed to help us get there. So, Ms. Mackey, thank you so much for your leadership, and, you know, I mean, the entire CED team, including our city manager and Paul Blue, and, and several others who worked on this, and we wouldn't be here without Red Development, a strong partner of many, many years with the city of Phoenix and Cityscape, and, and this is just an exciting project, and again, what's not to love about it? I'm absolutely supportive of it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments by members of this, of this council? I'll certainly be supportive of today's item and do plan to be supportive when the underlying item comes, the actual development agreement. There's been so much positive momentum in the heart of our city, which is important, not just for the entire city of Phoenix, the entire Valley, entire state of Arizona, that we continue our positive momentum in the heart of our, of our city. And this project is going to be a great, great step in that, continuing in that, in that direction, and we look for many, many more projects, high-value projects, like the one that's being proposed. With that, roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes on a seven to two vote before this city council. Thank you very much, Ms. Mackey. Next item on the agenda is item 57.
Move approval of item 57.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Do we have a card on 57? Oh, does someone want to comment on that? I apologize. Councilman Waring, please.
Very brief question. So this is basically to rectify the developer being charged twice. Is that a fair way of phrasing it?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes. In this particular case, it's for a project that is in District One, Pyramid Peak Parkway, that the applicant is going to dedicate right away and construct that portion of it. This council action item will allow them to do that and then not pay the impact fees, so we can't double charge them under state statute. It is making the, the current impact fee fund whole by transferring funds from a prior streets account within this area. It's supported by the Planning Development Department and Street Transportation Department.
All right. Thank you. The reason I asked the question was just to make it clear, we're not giving away money or anything. This, they're paying their fair share, whatever they else pays. This is just rectifying a, a little glitch in the system.
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
What item, 57?
I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Waring, you voting yes? Yes? Okay.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That passed unanimously. Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is item 64. 64.
Move approval of item 64.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item 64. We have a few cards of folks wishing to speak. Looks like two in favor and one opposed. Mr. Larry Lazarus, did you wish to provide testimony for this council?
I'd like to reserve comments right after the opposition, and then I'll speak to any opposition comments, if that's all right with the mayor.
That is fine with myself. Ernesto Valencia, did you wish to provide testimony? Did you want to provide testimony? Please come forward. You're in favor of the proposal?
Yes, sir. My name is Ernesto Valencia, and I've come the last, this is my third time coming to this meeting for this project. I, I'm for this project. I think it would be very beneficial economically, and it would also be good for the community. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Tony Buffon, opposed to the item?
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Tony Buffon. I live at 4230 North 33rd Street in Phoenix. I want to make a quick comment about my neighborhood. It's an amazing little neighborhood. It's a circular elliptical street plan, approximately a quarter of a mile in circumference. On the inner and outer circumference, there's about 46 well-kept homes. These are not tract homes. They're well-kept, well-maintained, and well out of the ordinary. It's an amazing little neighborhood. I'm a proud owner in that neighborhood. I've been there for 25 years. I don't intend to move. I don't intend to leave. I'm here for the duration. My big concern and my opposition is to, this development is being proposed. It's a development that borders my west property line, approximately 300 feet. Offices on the bottom floor, high-rise four stories, parking of upwards 300 cars, approximately 162 units. Very strongly opposed to this. I grew up in central Phoenix, as I've mentioned before in other meetings. I had apartments on both sides of me. I know the ups and downs of apartments, and I'm very, very opposed to having something like this as my, as my backdoor neighbor. If you go south on 32nd Street to Thomas and Osburn, there's probably four, five, six two-story apartment buildings for lease, for sale, for rent. You see the people wandering the streets that are, I guess you would say are less than desirable. I don't want them encroaching in my neighborhood through something like this. The developers are saying this is going to be a high-end apartment complex, upwards of $2,000 per unit. I'm curious what type of survey they've conducted to ensure that, that rent level will be maintained. I'm curious what type of survey they've conducted to ensure that that rent level will be maintained, because I suspect over time it will degrade. If I got more time?
You have, you had it full two minutes, but if you want to finish up a point, please feel free.
I'm strongly opposed to it. I think the noise, the pollution, the influx of traffic, cars, et cetera, et cetera, is a big detriment to my neighborhood, and I'm very, very strongly opposed to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Lazarus, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just briefly, we've done a lot of work on this project. We have village planning committee's unanimous support. We have planning commission unanimous support. We have a recommendation from staff in favor of the project with stipulations. We made a lot of, we had a lot of discussion with the adjacent neighbors. We stepped back the property in order to create a lessened height in the area. We meet all of the specifications of the, of the goals of the general plan, as well as the other goals within the community. We are agreeable to all stipulations as has been submitted to you from the planning commission, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Lazarus on this item? In favor, not wishing to speak, is Jeremy Amaro, Roxana Tavares, Ashley Black, and Paula Ramos.[1638.73]